Okay, I will call this meeting to order at 6:02 PM. And this is committee the whole. At this point in time, I'd like to take a moment of silence for our colleague Deputy Mayor Olkey, who has since passed since our last meeting. So please give us your thoughts and prayers at this point in time. At this point in time, I would like to offer the floor to any councillor who would like to say a few words about councillor or Deputy Mayor Olkey. Go ahead councillor maybe.
It is with great sadness that Mr Gordon Olkey passed away after our last meeting. He was definitely an officer and gentleman. If anybody has read his obituary, you will see that he touched many lives around this world. And it's men like him that have secured our freedoms. He will be greatly missed around this table. And he was always ready to chat about whatever it was that was on his mind. He and I many times talked about the sweet things of life, his honey and my maple syrup. Whether it be on his truck or in the sap house. So indeed, his candor, his well thought out process and what he brought to this council table will definitely be missed. And how he attended to all the needs of the people in Ward too. So Gord, to you, thank you very much for your dedicated service to this council and to all that you have touched over the years. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Go ahead councillor Lackey.
Thank you worship. There are few people in this world who can have such an impact in such a short amount of time in people's lives and Gord was definitely one of those people. For someone personally who have only known for four and a half years. It sure was a pleasure and he will be, he will be missed most definitely. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead councillor.
Stunna, later known as I'd only known Gord as a councillor, like you said, for our time on council. And I remember meeting Gord and he had just mentioned his new farm. And what brought him to council was his involvement in our community. Getting to know him quickly, you learn that he was a career infantry man for sure. And of intelligence both ways around. He always exhibited that dry humor and he had a devilish smile. And he was indeed a gentleman and an officer. I remember one day early in our council, when I got a text from him. And it said, "To Blue Buzzard, this is Muddy Boots." And he was referring to himself as an infantry officer and myself as a fly boy. And for the rest of our time together, I was Blue Buzzard and he was Muddy Boots. I always enjoyed his company. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry, go ahead.
Thank you your worship. Five years ago now, I met Gord Olkey for the first time in this very room. We started attending council meetings at the time to observe. And then recognized each other after two or three meetings, started sitting together chatting. From there forward, we revealed each other where our intentions to run for council that fall. After being successful to be elected, all of us here got to know Gord for who he really was. Very dedicated person. Gord stepped forward and volunteered on a couple of issues that needed to be resolved on behalf of the township. And I'll never forget his dedication, determination in doing so and seeing through to the end. But maybe more importantly, rather than just being successful in the resolve of that, all sides came away from that respectful and happy with the outcome. Not everyone can do that. Gord became a friend of mine because he wanted to absorb all he could about agriculture. First half of my life being a dairy farmer, he was intrigued by that. He being a beekeeper, or as he would jokingly refer to his flight crew. And he had various names he would refer to the bees. Gord served his whole life, attaining the rank of major as no small feat. But Gord served his whole life and was dedicated to none less than his family, his wife, his children. But to his country, his comrades. To those of us here on council and to the residents of township. The residents of township, old Gord Olkey, a thank you for what he has done, excuse me, for what he has done for us. And the path he has set forward for us. I myself consider I've lost a close friend. Rest in peace.
Councillor Jamison? Just have to unmute there.
I apologize. We cannot leave not mentioning Statler and Waldorf. Brian Mayby brilliantly observed that Gord and I had heated agreements all the time. We rarely disagreed on the goal, but we rarely agreed on how to get there. Which made for some interesting exchanges which led Gord to label us Statler and Waldorf, the grumpy old men. Muppet characters sitting up in the balcony complaining and arguing all the time. As the guy up in the balcony right now, quite literally, it's pretty lonely. And, and that's really all I can say. It's lonely, other than to say I was the older one of the Statler and help, uh, help, uh, Waldorf, what is the Statler and Waldorf? So I just want to finish by saying, uh, thank you Gord, thank you Lorraine for sharing him with us. And carry on sir. Thank you.
Thank you everyone. It has been a great honor to serve here with someone who believed in service above self, no matter what. He began his life that way and left this world that way. I will always remember the first time I met him, which was on a dairy farm during the campaign. And at the time Gord and I maybe weren't necessarily on the same side of the issue. Quickly though, we began a dialogue and a mutual respect for one another. And never have I met such a gentleman. He was kind, he was understanding, he certainly had very specific opinions. He stood up for what he believed in and believe he was on TV for that matter at one point in time. He was generous to a fault with his time. And the members of our community know that because if you called Gord with an issue, he made time for you. And this is not to disparage any one of you on council, but when it came to campaigning, Gord worked the hardest. For someone who was not from here, who had no connections or very few connections to start here. And to be elected duly elected in a township that he dubbed his second home is really an impressive feat and says a lot about his tenacity and dedication to a goal that he puts forward. I hope that we all get to write our final chapter the way that he did, the piece he found at the end watching a hockey game. And I will miss the honey that I got that still sits in my cupboard so. And what some people may not know is that honey lasts forever. It does not go bad. So I will keep it as a memento going forward. Thank you Gord. And he would want us to continue on with the business of the township and that's what we shall do. So the motion that comes forward is from councillor Maybe and seconded by councillor Fodey that the agenda be adopted as circulated. Are there any amendments, provisions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And the next motion or the next item on the agenda is declaration of culinary interest in the general nature thereof. Is there anybody who has an interest to declare this evening? I see none. So we'll move forward with number five, which is delegations and presentations. And I'll ask the general manager Katrina Ferlinetto from Cataract Way Region Conservation Authority to step forward from the, to the podium. And I'll ask the councillors for the time being, if you can shut off your cameras. We're just hoping to not use up all the bandwidth. People can still hear us if we want to ask questions during the presentation, but just for bandwidth to make sure we don't lose our connections to the live stream please and thank you. Go ahead Katrina.
I'm good. You can hear me?
Yeah, you can hear again. Go ahead.
Perfect. Thank you Madam Mayor. And through you and good evening fellow council members. So again, my name is Katrina Ferlinetto. I'm the general manager of Cataract Way Region Conservation Authority or Cataract Way Conservation as we go by now. And with me this evening virtually is Andrew Schmidt, our manager of Watershed Planning and Engineering. And we will be jointly giving a presentation on our programs and services, some legislative updates and the next steps for the organization. But before I continue, I want to also pass along my deepest sympathy to the councillor for the loss of councillor Olkey. He has been a dedicated member on our board since I've been with the organization. He always brought humor, sarcasm and the voice of both the township, the residents and the greater watershed. And he is, is very deeply missed. We also set aside a moment of silence and talked about memories from him at our last board meeting. So again, thank you for allowing him to sit on our board and help us with our work. Next slide please. So in terms of tonight's presentation, I will be speaking a little bit about Cataract Way Conservation for a refresher. For those of you who may not have worked with us very often. Then I'll speak a little bit about the Conservation Authorities Act and some amendments that have taken place over the last several years. Followed by the implications of Bill 23, the more homes built faster act, how that's impacted our services and that of the municipality. Programs and services of a nature of what we offer and some of the changes that will happen over the next 12 months. As well as Andrew will be speaking to a floodplain mapping project which the township is a partner on. So we'll talk a little bit about those logistics and then a few pieces on looking ahead. Next slide please. So in terms of a bit about our history, Cataract Way Conservation is one of 36 conservation authorities across the province of Ontario. We were established at the request of municipalities under the province of Ontario in 1964. We are governed under the legislation, the Conservation Authorities Act, which is overseen by the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry. As you can see on the slide, we have a decently large watershed of just over 3,800 square kilometers. And it is very unique in geography as, as the township would know. Lots of lakes, lots of Lake Ontario and St Lawrence River shoreline. We have the shield that goes through the middle and it's very diverse ecologically. We are governed by an appointed board of members from our municipalities, some citizen and some councillors. And we work to manage natural resources on a watershed basis. So looking at the regional scale and how we can work together to ensure that we have ecological preservation moving forward. Next slide please. So in terms of some of the work we do for accountability and transparency, we have worked with the board over the last several years to ensure that a lot of our foundational documents are on our website. As I mentioned, we are governed by appointed members and so they bring the interests of the municipalities while considering that watershed based scale. We have a governance section on our website which has our strategic documents. It talks about some of our programs and services agreements and is a place to really understand who we are and what we do. We strive to be transparent with our decision making as well as be accountable to some of the works that we do within the programs and services and how we plan to move forward. In particular, we have annual reports. We have a budget work planned which talks about some of the key initiatives during the year, which I'll speak to in a bit. As well as our financial statements for anyone who's interested.
Katrina, can I have you just pause for one second? We're just having a technical issue with our slides not advancing for the public to see. So just give us two seconds.
No problem.
Rectify that.
That's how that goes.
Which is part of why we've asked everybody to shut their cameras off so that we don't have this issue, but here we are. Technology's great as long as it works. Through no fault of the clerk. We just have to upload your slides on a different computer. So just loading now.
Not complicated at all.
And there we go. Okay, so we were on slide number three, four. Go ahead.
Perfect. And then lastly, I just mentioned that on, as mentioned on this slide, we publish a watershed report card and we will be publishing a new one in 20, for 2023 in the coming weeks. For those of you who like to look at the resource and get a sense of what happens within our watershed. And next slide please. So in terms of value providing to the watershed, we manage natural resources on a regional scale as mentioned. We protect water resources and we protect people and property from natural hazards. We offer learning opportunities for citizens of all ages. We are considered technical experts in our field. And will support municipalities and other agencies in understanding watershed health. And we provide access to nature, which has been an incredible opportunity for citizens the last several years. We have received over half a million people coming out to our properties just enjoying the space and have commended the work of having that available space for them. Next slide please. In terms of some of our accomplishments, we had a very busy 2022. And I've listed some of here, I've listed some of the accomplishments here on the screen. I don't want to speak to all of them, but I just would like to mention that we have completed a lake reporting dashboard, which you've probably seen earlier this year, which talks a lot about water quality, citizen engagement and gets our watershed to understand some of the lakes within our region. We have recently acquired updated LiDAR, which has been a huge project across eastern Ontario and have received that data. So that will become available over the coming months. We worked with United Counties of Leeds and Granville on your behalf, and so that data will be available to your staff. As well as the floodplain mapping project that we're entering into to get a better handle on what's happening on the St Lawrence River, which Andrew will speak to in a couple of slides. Next slide please. So I'll move on to a little bit of the legislative framework. So the Conservation Authorities Act has gone through a major review since 2017. Under, at the time, the Ministry of the Environment, Conservation and Parks, they set out to do a two-phase review of the legislation. Phase one was to talk about governance and defining our programs and services. And then phase two was to talk about our budget and apportionment and how we go through the, the financial process under the Conservation Authorities Act. So in 2021, phase one was released and that came out with regulations talking about our mandatory programs and services. And what that means is that the work that we do is categorized into three different categories, which I'll talk to in a, in a different slide. And for us to continue some of our programs and have municipalities support those program initiatives, we will be required to enter into cost apportioning agreements with those municipalities moving forward. So I'll provide a little bit of context on that in a few minutes. Phase two then came out in 2022 and had four regulations that broke down the different budget apportionments and how we work within the Conservation Authority framework. I'm happy to say the Cataract Way Conservation is compliant with all the requirements under phase two. And we are working through phase one to be completed over the next year, as most of those deliverables will be completed in 2024. Then in 2022, the oversight from the Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks transitioned back to the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry. And since then, there has been new legislation under Bill 23, which has now influenced services from a natural heritage perspective, especially with our role with commenting under the Planning Act for applications. And I'll speak to that in a couple of slides. Next slide please. So in terms of the definitions of our programs and services, now under the Conservation Authorities Act, our services are grouped into what you see here on the screen. So we have category one services which are considered mandatory. They are listed in legislation and they are funded primarily by municipal levy. We then have category two services which are considered programs that we offer on behalf of the municipality. So if we, if we manage a water control structure, for example, if we offer a service on your behalf within the township and some of our planning commenting that we do for stormwater management, natural heritage, et cetera, would be considered a category two service. So what that means is that to continue the service, we would have to enter into an agreement with municipalities who choose that service. And should that agreement no longer be in place, the municipality would have to take on that service moving forward. The category three definition is a locally supported programmer service. This has to do a lot with our stewardship or watershed monitoring and reporting and a lot of our education and public programming. So it's the public facing services that get people out to the properties, understanding the watershed, understanding the natural resources within our municipalities. To move forward with these programs, as I mentioned earlier, we would need to enter into agreements with municipalities so that you understand the programs that we offer and so that it's transparent to the public how they're being funded moving forward. And then the last category is considered general expenses or enabling services, which is basically the overheaded administration operation, operating funds to allow the Conservation Authority to work. Next slide please. So all of those programs are listed in our programs and services inventory, which is on our website and has been circulated to municipalities. We are undergoing an update of that just based on some of the recent legislative changes. But as I mentioned, our category three services, so a lot of that public facing stewardship services are required to enter into agreements. And so we're currently working with your staff and with staff across our watershed to talk about these specific services, such as our education programs for younger kids. We have forest therapy. We've got maple banis and winter recreation. Some of which have been going over the last several months and that we have had residents from the township come out and enjoy some of those spaces. So we'll be drafting an agreement that will be considered by a staff level and by council. And we're hoping to have all of those agreements combined into one so that there's a reduced administrative overhead there. And hopeful to have any negotiations and consideration completed by July 2023 to allow us to have the confidence to move forward with our 2024 budget. Next slide please. In terms of Bill 23, I won't spend too much time on this as I'm sure council and staff are very familiar with this piece of legislation. However, as of January 1st, I did want to speak a little bit to some of the changes and how it impacted the Conservation Authority and some of the work that we, that we provide as part of the development review application process. So the one piece that I will mention is that although plan review has been impacted from a natural heritage perspective, it has not been impacted from natural hazards perspective. So the Conservation Authority continues to be a strong partner with the municipalities to review development applications. We're continually working with your staff to still receive applications and to review them from the scope that we are required to do so. Next slide please. So what has come into effect January 1st? There, there's a couple of items listed here on the screen. The two that I'll speak a little bit about is the second and third bullet. So the first being the prohibition on commenting on specific planning applications related to prescribed acts. So there are several acts that are now listed in legislation that we are not allowed to comment on when reviewing a planning application. And I'll, I'll get to that in the next slide. And then there's the minister's direction that was provided to Conservation Authorities on freezing our fees related to development review. So we have received direction that our freeze cannot increase or decrease for the year of 2023. So they will be, we will remain what is listed on our website and approved by our board last fiscal. Next slide please. So the new regulation where it lists out the prescribed acts are listed here on the screen. So we are unable to comment on planning applications when it relates to any of these particular acts. We are however, going to continue commenting on our natural hazards role as well as our role from a drinking water source protection perspective. The big act that had an impact on us really is the Planning Act. So we have had to delegate or provide, I would say, our services of natural heritage review back to the township. That was something that we were doing prior to this act. And we've been working with the county and municipalities to talk about the resources we've provided, the history of the work that we've done and how to continue that business continuity. Cause we find it very important to have that natural heritage aspect considered within development applications and want to ensure that that service continues and we can provide the utmost training to your staff. Next slide please. What hasn't yet changed but was listed under Bill 23 is with regard to the permitting role of the Conservation Authority. So at this time, our permitting role stays intact. It is status quo and it has not been impacted by legislation. However, there is a possibility moving forward that later this year, we may receive further information of changes to that service. When we receive more information, we will definitely circulate the municipality. And I'd be happy to speak to any of those details once they are known at this point, at that point. Next slide please. So in terms of Cataract Way Conservation's programs, we have five different programs areas within the Conservation Authority that are listed here on the screen. Governance and Administration, Conservation Lands and Areas Management, Water, Natural Hazards and Watershed Management, Drinking Water Source Protection and Education and Public Programming. Next slide please. So in terms of how that relates to the legislation, as I mentioned, there are now different categories of programs and the Conservation Authority is required to be transparent on how our programs fall into these different categories and how they're going to be funded moving forward. So we operate on an integrated watershed model scale. So all the different responsibilities of the organization integrate together. So moving forward, we want to continue that strong relationship with the different programs and with the 11 municipalities in our jurisdiction. And as mentioned, we'll be bringing forward agreements for consideration at council to continue with some of those locally supported services. So that's a lot of our tree planting, our public facing programs that I spoke to earlier and the engagement on the landscape. Next slide please. I've mentioned our 2023 budget and business work plan. It's an annual document that we pulled together that council may have seen through your budget package. It talks about our strategic initiatives for the year. It outlines how our budget is determined. And it spoke to some of the legislative changes that I've just walked through with you. So if ever you have any questions on any of the information in there, please reach out and I'd be happy to, to answer and provide further information. Next slide please. So I'll now pass it over to Andrew who'll speak about our exciting St Lawrence River floodplain hazard mapping project.
Thank you Katrina and good evening. Can everyone hear me okay?
We can. Sorry, I was nodding my head, but I realized my camera's off. So my apologies. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Andrew Schmidt and I'm the manager of Watershed Planning and Engineering at Cataract Way Conservation. My apologies for not being able to be with you in person this evening. And I'm wondering though, if it might be best if I leave my camera off. Just asking if that's what you would prefer.
You can, you can leave your camera on. It's when the rest of us are all in the same room trying to use up the bandwidth. So I think you're fine.
Great, thank you. For the next few slides, I'll be speaking with you about the St Lawrence River flood hazard mapping project. The objective of the project is to update flood risk mapping for the St Lawrence River from Kingston to Brockville, including the Thousand Islands. Current available mapping was completing and completed in 1985. So the mapping is actually closer to 40 years old than the 30 as suggested on the slide. Some folks may ask why this project is a high priority since we already have flood risk mapping for the St Lawrence River shoreline. Essentially, it's for four reasons. Firstly, high water levels in 2017 and 2019 have increased anxiety in the community about the risks of flooding. Secondly, there have been changes to the operation of the Moses Sanders Dam in Cornwall, which calls into question the validity of the mapping. Thirdly, warming climate conditions were not taken into account when the mapping was originally prepared. And fourthly, increasing development pressure along the St Lawrence River corridor. This is a $315,000 project with multiple funding partners, which while I will go over in detail on the next slide. Essentially though, in the fall of 2022, staff became aware of the flood hazard identification and mapping program known as the FIMP program. The FIMP program is a federally funded initiative through Natural Resources Canada that provides up to 50% funding support for floodplain hazard mapping projects across that provides up to fifty percent funding support for floodplain hazard mapping projects across Canada. In Ontario, the Ontario Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry is administering the program. Prior to making application, Cataract Way Conservation staff reached out to municipalities having jurisdiction along the Saint Lawrence River shoreline to assess interest in particip- in partnering to secure a grant to complete the work. Five municipalities agreed to partner with Cataract Way Conservation in applying for FIMP funding, including Township of Leeds and the Thousand Islands, City of Brockville, Township of Elizabeth Town, Kitley, Front of Young Township, and the City of Kingston. As the project applicant, Cataract Way Conservation was informed that the application had been approved for a grant of a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars on November the third, two thousand and twenty-two. Next slide, please. So we had to come up with a way to um, apportion the cost for this project. So apportionment of the partner municipality's share was established by determining the number of shoreline properties within each of the partner municipalities as a percentage. This is what this table is showing. This percentage is intended to quantify the benefit for each participating municipality in order to distribute the costs fairly. Now, the mathematicians in the crowd will notice that the parcel percentage column, the third column from the left, does not actually total a hundred percent, rather it totals ninety-six percent. This is because the town of Ganunakwe decided not to participate in the project, which represents about four percent of the total. So the table outlines the breakdown of costs in relation of the, to the number of shoreline property parcels, as well as the partner shares a percentage of the total project cost in the far right-hand column. So for the Township of Leeds and the Thousand Islands, fifty-six percent of the total number of shoreline property parcels were found to be located in the township. Having fifty percent of the shoreline parcel percentage equates to seventy-five thousand, six hundred dollar partner's share of the total project cost. This represents about twenty-four percent of the total project cost. So in simple terms, the township is receiving fifty-six percent of the benefit while paying twenty-four percent of the total project cost. Next slide, please. So he may also ask, what, what are the uses of, of this product? Well, the big one is protection of life and property from the effects of natural hazards, in this case flooding. Um, this is in line with section three point one of the provincial policy statement relating to natural hazards. And it can also be used to update mapping information for inclusion in future official plan and zoning bylaw updates for the municipality. It also supports Cataract Way Conservation's permitting rule under Ontario Regulation one forty-eight oh six. That's our Development Interference with Wetlands and Alterations to Shorelines and Watercourses Regulations, also in support of section three point one of the provincial policy statement. And thirdly, can inform local decisions on public infrastructure projects like roads, waste, and water infrastructure uh, near and around the river shoreline. Next slide, please. So not to get too far into the weeds, um, but I do understand there are some questions out there about the technical aspects of the project, so I included this slide. So technical aspects include field reconnaissance and drone photography to kind of verify things on the ground. Um, just to kind of to QA QC uh, things as the project moves along. It'll also include updated statistical analysis of static uh, river levels, storm surge, and combined flood levels at the Kingston, Brockford, and the Arquaw water level gauges, including assessment of the hundred-year regulatory flood level and three climate change scenarios. A hydrodynamic model calibrated and verified for the Saint Lawrence River will be used from Kingston to Arquaw Dam to simulate gradients and river levels for the selected extreme events that are listed here. Also, nearshore wind, wind wave and ship wake assessment will be included for the shoreline in proximity to the shipping channel and wave uprush analysis for the shoreline to map the flood hazard. The mapping will be consistent with federal flood mapping guidelines and Ontario's technical guide. And there will be a technical report outlining the methodology for the regulatory flood hazard maps and a discussion of the projected impacts of climate change on the flood hazard in the shoreline. Uh, next slide, please. So I just wanted to wrap up by providing you with uh, a rough timeline that we expect to follow for this project. Um, in February, uh, we released a, an RFP for a request for proposals um, to undertake the work. In March, we anticipate we'll be able to retain a consultant and start the project. Uh, we've already been in meetings with uh, Natural Resources Canada and the Ministry of Natural Resources uh, and Forestry leading up to this point. In August, we're looking at ha- having the consultant do the hydrologic and hydraulic modeling, and up until October, uh, prepare a draft report and draft mapping. Then we get into the public consultation stage, which we hope to wrap up by January two thousand and twenty-four, um, which would be undertaken by Cataract Way Conservation staff and the project consultant, with the final report and mapping completed in March, two thousand and twenty-four, and then dissemination of the report and the mapping deliverables as well in March of two thousand and twenty-four. I should also mention that a partners committee will be established consisting of our staff, municipal staff, and the project consultant. The partners committee will meet approximately four times throughout the duration of the project. Next slide. Thank you. And with that, I will turn it back over to Katrina to finish up the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. So in terms of what the next year looks like for us, there's a lot going on. We will be focusing on implementing the changes to the Conservation Authorities Act. As I mentioned, there are several key provincial deliverables, such as different agreements, uh, watershed-based resource management strategy, a conservation land strategy, and asset management plans for our facilities and structures. We'll be working to update our programs and services inventory to reflect some of these legislative changes, and that will be circulated to municipalities. And then we will, we will work with councils to move forward on continuing these services. We are working on a long-term asset management plan. Some of our facilities and assets are reaching their end of life. And so we are doing that analysis in-house and we'll be working through our board to talk about a long-term financial strategy and how we can work together with municipalities to provide that maintenance moving forward. Next slide, please. And lastly, on a more positive note, uh, the, there is the fortieth anniversary of Maple Madness going on right now. For any of you who have not been out to Little Cataract Way Creek, I encourage you to come out. It started this past weekend. It runs all weekends in March, including March break, and we serve up to uh, fifteen hundred people a day. So it's a, a great turnout. We've received townships, residents, and residents from all across our watershed. So I encourage you to come, take a look if you haven't yet. And uh, with that, next slide. Thank you very much for your time this evening and for inviting both Andrew and I to speak to council, and we'd be happy to answer any of the question, any questions you may have on the material this evening. Perfect. So we will ask everybody to turn their cameras back on now that the slideshow is completed. So uh, questions from council members, and then I'll ask for questions from the public. Go ahead, Councilor Graff.
Uh, good evening, all, and thank you very much for a great presentation. Just a question, I guess, to Andrew regarding the Saint Lawrence uh, watershed planning that we're paying six, seventy-six thousand dollars for. Is there, uh, my understanding is that the uh, Great Lakes Adaptive Management Group, GLAM, under the IJC, uh, has been doing a lot of engineering and technical work on the Saint Lawrence River water levels. So would there be any coordination with that group? Because they were put in place because of two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and nineteen and Plan two fourteen being called into question. So uh, it would strike me that uh, Andrew mentioned in his presentation that the Moses Sanders, Saunders Dam has a tremendous influence in this. That's GLAM. They dictate that. So I would be curious to know whether there is a coordination with that body. Thank you.
Good question, and through you, Madam Mayor. Andrew, go ahead.
Thank you. That's a fantastic question. And uh, the simple answer is yes. The Natural Resources Canada and Environment Canada have been working through the GLAM group on um, the Saint Lawrence River water level situation. Um, our RFP that we recently distributed includes um, some coordination between the consultant and all of those organizations um, to ensure that we have the most accurate and up-to-date information moving forward.
Thank you. Councilor Mayby, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and through you, uh, to Mr. Schmidt. Uh, with the floodplain mapping, uh, and will it correct the development areas that are on our borders? Cause we have had some issues with developments or existing developments that are already on the water and how it has been portrayed in the past with floodplain, and just wondering if that's going to correct any of that. On the official plan, the floodplain actually says the whole border is all floodplain. And with the uh, different boroughs that have been built and different uh, buildings and residences and such, whether that will be taken into consideration with the floodplain and taken off the, the mapping and just leaving the areas not to get into the weeds, as he mentioned um, about that issue.
Andrew? Go ahead, Andrew, and through you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, through you, Madam Mayor. Another great question. Um, typically, the mapping will show the entire floodplain for, for this, the, the stretch of shoreline. Um, however, there are different policy areas applied to uh, different types of development, whether it's existing development as opposed to new development. Um, so, so the mapping typically shows the entire floodplain area. Um, whereas um, policies under the regulation or under the official plan or zoning bylaw uh, are meant to interpret uh, how, how development is to occur moving forward.
Uh, go ahead, Councilor Fody.
Thank you worship through you to Mr. Schmidt. In your presentation, it stated protect life and property from the effects of natural hazards. Are you indicating there that somebody's going to be held accountable?
Katrina, you wanna take, or take a stab at that? Through you, Madam Mayor. Uh, thank you, Councilor Fody. So our programs and services look to protect life and property from natural hazards from our regulatory role. So when we look at floodplain mapping, when we look at uh, some of the drought and erosion challenges within the watershed, we're looking to, to determine where those thresholds are, to make sure that we have the most accurate information to support municipalities and to support development decisions moving forward. So we use the data that's available. That data is based on, on different models. And so I think it's a partnership that ourselves, municipalities, and others work towards to be accountable to that data.
Okay, like you.
Okay, I don't have any other hands up around the council table. Is there anybody online or in the gallery that would like to ask a question? I see no hands up. Thank you very much for your presentation and thank you for attending in person. I know it's been a while since we have seen these delegations in person. So we appreciate that effort and we appreciate your kind words about Deputy Mayor Oki. Thank you very much. Enjoy the rest of your meeting. Next item on our agenda is five point two, and it's Jennifer Brill from the Ganunakwe and Thousand Islands uh, two thousand and twenty-two Visitor Center Report Presentation. Uh, she has an additional individual who's tagging with her in case, uh, just, just in case, okay? So uh, we always look forward to see these numbers of the visitors and the people uh, coming to share our beautiful area with us. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Council, and Staff. Uh, two thousand and twenty-two was a very exciting year at the Visitor Center and happy to present our presentation. Uh, we would also like to offer our condolences. Uh, we will miss uh, Deputy Mayor Oki's support.
All right. Oh, Jeff, you wanna ju- just pull the mic down a little bit towards your mouth?
Sorry.
There you go, just so that the people out in TV land can hear you very clearly.
I tend to be quiet too when I'm nervous. So, all right, um. If you could turn the page. Um, so thanks to grants from Canada Summers Jobs and Young Canada Works, we were able to hire some amazing, amazing students this some, this past summer. I won't read you their bios, but I did want to include them for you to look over at your own convenience. I'm happy to report that uh, five out of these six students have agreed to come back this year. So we're excited about that. Uh, next page, please. One of the first things we do when we hire new staff is we get them familiarized uh, with our region. We do this by driving them around the township and either pointing out or stopping at businesses and attractions. Staff get the opportunity to meet business owners and experience some of the excursions such as boat cruises, helicopter tours, the donkey farm, the tower, et cetera. Um, these experience, experiences get our staff excited and their enthusiasm is passed on to our visitors. Next page, please. So last year, we created a role slash responsibility with the help from TLTI. This staff member was in charge of getting out and about in the township, visiting businesses, and creating video content and posts, as well as setting up pop-up visitor services. Each week, we paired a different student with Aiden, and they would focus on a particular location or activity. Over the summer, Aiden accumulated over two thousand videos. And I actually brought a list of all the places in TLTI that Aiden had visited, uh, which is thirty-nine. Yeah. So we had feedback from one such business that saw a direct booking after the video was posted. Next page, please. Thank you. On our TikTok account, we created and shared over fifty videos. And then on Instagram, we had over or almost a hundred thousand impressions. And then we created a new uh, Travel Thousand Islands Facebook page, which is visitor services, so people can reach out and ask questions. And we posted over a hundred and thirty posts and had over two hundred and twenty-five followers by the end of the year. Next page, please. One of our big projects this year was rebuilding our Travel Thousand Islands website, and the results are beautiful. Our website is an unbiased, inclusive directory for all area businesses, attractions, and events, which falls within our mandate to promote all businesses equally. You can see that each year our website clicks have been growing. Next page, please. One way we improved our website is by adding photo links instead of dropdown menus to help navigate the site easily. Next page, please. And we added maps and communities to help visitors and users see what else is available in each community. Next page, please. So each year, we, we take a visitor tracking, sorry, I got stumbled there. Um, and uh, in two thousand and twenty-two, we welcomed over twenty-four thousand, six hundred visitors. That's an increase of over eleven thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven uh, from two thousand and twenty-one. And why? Well, uh, people feel more comfortable traveling again. There was less restrictions and people are feeling a lot more confident. And then as well, as part of our service, we survey. And uh, from our survey, you'll see that we have gained some valuable statistics such as uh, seventy-five percent of the people traveling were coming without children. Uh, more than fifty percent of the visitors stayed overnight. And then if you look down at the last one, forty-seven percent visited from Ontario with the majority coming from the Toronto region. And uh, I reached out to Amanda, uh, Trafford, uh, Business Development and Economic Development, and as well, Meg Dabros, who was the executive director of TieUp at the time. And I asked if that's where they were spending their money uh, in the Toronto region, and both of them had said, yeah. So right there, you can see some of those marketing dollars uh, being well spent. Next page, please. So uh, we are returning to pre-COVID numbers, and we're pretty excited about that. Um, the most interesting thing about this is if you look at October, we actually surpassed uh, two thousand and nineteen, which was our biggest year ever um, for that one month. And the reason that happened was the, they dropped the Arrive Can app. And I saw visitors in the office that very day from the United States. Yeah. So it was a great month. Next page, please. And then as well, um, we've just started tracking like the amount of phone calls and emails that we receive in the Visitor Center since COVID. And uh, this year, our phone, or last year, our phone calls were down, but our emails were up, which means people were reaching out through the website, which is also good for our new website. Next page, please. So our two thousand and twenty-two objectives, uh, we wanted to expand visitor services, and we did. We bought a, a pop-up info counter. Uh info counter. Uh we wanted more representation in T L T I, which we did. We hired additional students and we did the pop-up services as as well as increasing our social media. And then we wanted to build that new website and we did. Um. So going forward for twenty twenty-three, we want to continue to expand visitor services. Uh I have applied for seven student grants again. And uh we want to offer more onsite pop-up visitor services. Um and of course, we want to have more regularly scheduled posts. Um we want to expand our information services with a. A s- a simple and scheduled newsletter. We want to increase our social social media reach. Uh year after year, we are hiring a content creator, same position again this year and we uh we hope to make that even bigger. Um as well as continue the Travel Thousand Islands website updates always needs a refresh. New new um photos, new blogs and just keeping it fresh. And then as well. We are adding something that I found we needed in the office. We don't have a visitor guide anymore, so I get inquiries weekly um for mailouts and we just don't have anything. So we in office are printing a little um mirroring our dining and artisan guide. This little info pamphlet that we can insert um to send out. So it's free for everybody. We put all the accommodations in there and we're just printing it with our in-house printer. If you guys wanna have a look at that, please do. Um and then next page, please. Our guestbook, um just a fun fact that I posted. Up there was since two thousand and fifteen, we have assisted over two hundred thousand visitors. And it's uh it would be a lot higher because we hadn't been, we haven't been tracking the emails and phone calls until COVID hit, so. Yeah, and next page, please. I'm not sure if you've seen, but we uh actually launched our very first newsletter in October. And we've launched three of them since um the next one will be coming out very shortly, spring. Um and if you guys don't subscribe, I encourage you to go on the website and subscribe and you'll get it right in your email. And then our last page, um. Thank you uh from the staff at the Ganarokwe Thousand Islands Visitor Center. Uh be happy to have answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions from the council members? Go ahead, Counsel Maybe.
Thank you, uh Madam Mayor and through you. Uh I have two questions and you had a list there of uh where to in T L T I were the pop-ups. Uh maybe you just highlight a couple of them there if you could. And then um with the recent TikTok banning through. Provincial and government phones, are you going to continue using that as a platform for the Chamber or the Visitor Center?
At this time, yes. Yes, um we haven't got any uh uh mandate from. From the town or from yourselves yet on whether you think that's an issue. Uh I believe it reaches out to a younger audience. So for now, yep.
I think Amanda has something to add to that. Perfect.
Hi there. Um okay, so I what I wanted to add was um the devices that we use are not town devices. So while the iPad that the children use, children, the kids use.
You're not that old, Amanda.
I know. The devices that the kids use are ma- um are on our systems that don't contain any of our information. Other than pictures and video content. They actually create the videos on their own phones. So.
And then email them.
And then email them. We have a a Wi-Fi device that travels with the kids so that they don't have to use their own Wi-Fi. And we just pay a monthly fee for them to be able to use that. So there's nothing been come down yet that says that we would need to stop using it. Jennifer is correct. It's it reaches a younger market. I think something like seventy-five percent of um families look to their children. When they're with video content, like with TikTok specifically, look to their children for advice on where to go for vacation. And so that's why we've seen such, I think, success on TikTok. Um and our numbers grow steadily even if we don't post because that content continues to roll. And kids from the area share, they go off to college, university, they have friends elsewhere. And that's kind of how the message spreads through TikTok. So hopefully we can continue to use it.
Um while sh- while you're at the podium, the Wanderer app and the integration between the Visitor Center, is there, can you speak to that?
Sure. So with the Wanderer, we've been using TikTok, Instagram, Facebook. Um and what we do that helps to promote, so we've gained quite a heavy following with the Wanderer. And we're actually looking to increase it to go through the summer. We may be able to extend that program with the same amount of funding. Um the two play off of each other because what happens is you tag. So you tag the Travel Thousand Islands, you tag the Wanderer. And it's extra promotion. So when Jennifer talks about the the Toronto market, that's where we spend our dollars. Ottawa, you'll see numbers come back, numbers come back on videos, New York State, Ottawa, Toronto. That's where um we're trying to get people outside of that fifty kilometer radius is really who we're trying to hit. And so with the help of projects like Thousand Islands Wanderer and then the Travel Thousand Islands, which actually has a pretty hefty following on Instagram. Um we've actually been able to reach some of these markets. And then um with side projects, we've hired influencers to come in. And that has also gotten our name in some press and on lists of the Thousand Islands is one of the top places to come visit. Nar City is a a big one that a lot of people look to and we've been featured um as the Thousand Islands in there based on. The content that we have been creating as well as the people that we've hired to create content for us.
Excellent. Yeah. Further questions, comments? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, being somebody who goes through the Visitor Center on a regular basis, it seems. Um it's great to see the number of people I've been in there in the summertime, usually dressed a little differently. And the response of all the people that are getting helped through the staff that are there is wonderful. And I thank you very much for promoting both Ganarokwe and T L T I. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? I'm looking to the computer in case Counsel Jameson has his hand up.
May I just add one more thing as well through you, Madam Mayor?
Absolutely.
Um Jennifer forgot to point out that three of our students were actually from T L T I. And so through their work, they've actually been discovering new places as well, uh which I think is pretty cool. And so it gives that fresh aspect of um of them finding locations and sharing them with with other people. So Jennifer's done a really good job with with the kids, not the children.
Well, I think it's a a testament to uh a lot of things. One, both of you working so well together along with Tie Up, the Chamber and everyone else. That works in that building. Uh also, the fact that the businesses have come to rely on your promotion. And you know, some of us older people who don't use TikTok as much, I've tried, I'm not so great at it, but um. But the fact remains is that is what's catching people's eye and bringing them here. Uh and it's nice to see the the numbers. Itching inching back towards uh pre-COVID numbers because we all know that a lot of our businesses are dependent on that. And obviously, how they're greeted at the Visitor Center. And I think it's also a testament to the fact that people still wanna go online. But they still like to hear recommendations from locals um and from the people at the Visitor Center. So it it's great to see those numbers and how you're tracking that. So kudos to all of you for that very valuable service. Counsel Foddy.
Thank you worship through you. I think you, your organization needs to be commended, all of you for what you're doing as being able to pivot. Adapt to the time and the modernizations and whichever way that may be. That's one of the few things that COVID has done well for us all. It's it's taken us away from newspapers. Although older generations such as myself will never, but but the the pivoting factor. Shows your willingness to adapt and follow the trends wherever they may go. And I'm sure you've already heard this. I have several times. You've awoken the residents right here in our own township and the town as to what's around them. Well, I forgot about that being there. I've never even been there yet. I hear that comment often. So it's it's, I know you're reaching a further afield, but you're awakening within. I appreciate that.
And I'll just uh finish by saying that it gives me great pleasure and makes me extremely proud when I see those videos online promoting. Us at as a township and our sister town Ganarokwe and all of the businesses. Because those are the people that employ our residents. Um and uh we love to see the visitors come every year. Happy to see him go and fall. No, I'm kidding. Um so thank you and keep up the the good work. And uh if there's any opportunity to partner, please feel free to reach out to us.
Thank you, thank you.
Um oh, before I go, I I should I should ask, is are there any questions from the gallery? I I have three attendees on here, so I wanna double check. I do not. So you're free to go. Thank you, ladies. Okay, so we're at seven o'clock. So we'll go, we'll try to go till about seven thirty and then we'll take a break. Um at about seven thirty, if everybody's okay with that. Next item on the agenda is staff reports and it's six point one administration report, Rockport Customs Dock Lease. And the motion comes forward moved by Counsel Foddy, seconded by Counsel Maybe. At the Committee of the Whole recommends that council grant three readings and final passage of bylaw number twenty-three dash zero one eight being a bylaw to authorize the lease. Of the property known as Rockport Customs Dock to the Friends of Rockport Customs Restoration Society. Okay, discussion on this motion. Go ahead, Counsel Maybe.
Um my only question was, uh is there any future uh work or upgrades being planned for this site that anybody is aware of?
Um I'll go ahead, Counsel Gora.
Yes, I, the uh two outstanding items are. Uh they ran out of time last season for the painting of the decking. It's a special paint. And we're actually storing it for them. And secondarily, the uh next big project to be completed is the donor wall. Which is going to go on the west fence line. It's gonna be pretty lovely. And there were a lot of uh don- donors to that project, raising six hundred and fourteen thousand dollars.
Excellent. Any further comments or questions in regards to the motion that's on the floor? Go ahead, Counsel Lackey.
Um through you worship, just a technical issue on the bylaw itself at the last page. Um there's nothing there that refers to. And I don't know if it needs to be there, the two-year rather than five. It actually doesn't, our bylaw doesn't show any time.
Those the bylaw just needs to be corrected before we pass it at council.
It's just passed as it's read, as it's.
It it'll be passed as read. The the actual lease is attached as a schedule to the bylaw. So it'll be a year in there. So it's.
Technically, right. Okay, perfect. The lawyer says it's covered. We'll take his word for it. Any further comments or questions? I will call a question. All those in favor, please signify. All those post carried. Next item is administration report SR dash zero three nine dash twenty-three, approval of corporate expense policy and repeal select human resource policies. Motion comes forward from Counsel Maybe, seconded by Counsel Foddy. That the Committee of the Whole recommends council approve the human resource policy corporate expense. And that the Committee of the Whole recommends that council repeal the following policies. H R twenty-one travel expenses, H R twenty-two vehicle use, H R twenty-three conferences and conventions, H R twenty-four membership dues. Discussion on the motion. I see no hands up, so. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of questions that I had was uh the travel expenses re overtime call-ins. In the respect that uh if if there's an emergency call-in and the person is coming from home. Um uh just happen to know from experience that it is allowed for for some cases. Just wondering if there's any option or it's just cut and dried, no, or.
So uh through you, Madam Mayor. Um so are you talking and calling for public works?
Well. Well, there's many, many departments that could be called in, but emergency ser- um not emergency service, but emergency call-in. And they're coming from home and it's a different timeframe, you know.
So that would be, that'd be subject to approval for overtime if it's an emergency. Um basically, we'll get whoever needs, what a hands on deck we need and we'll sort it out afterwards.
Okay.
Um but I I mean, always being fair, if people are coming in outside of regular work hours at the request of of the township, they're gonna be compensated.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And the one other question that I had was um on food expenses, uh when one card is used for many people who might partake in that particular meal. I know that uh perhaps uh you know, that situation can happen. Um whereas I think it's stated in here that everybody has to cover their own meal and then be reimbursed. But if you're as a group at a conference, let's say, and the bill, meal is being covered by a credit card. Uh then there's no reimbursement to the individual, but the card has covered their meal. Is that how it's going to work? Continue?
Generally, if it's two people out, um we would prefer that the individual cardholders cover their own meals. So that we know that they've stayed within their 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 allotment. Of course, there'll be some. Uh things, a a group will be uh will be uh yeah, anomaly. So if if there's a multiple of a multiple people out and someone puts it on their credit card, we'll need an itemized listing to make sure that. You know, everything's okay as far as the the expenses, no alcohol, of course.
Yeah.
And uh of course, the people who have enjoyed the meal but are, it's being paid under a different credit card. Would not be able to claim the meal under an expense.
Yep, don't let, that's perfect, thank you.
Any further comments or questions in regards to the HR policy? Go ahead, Counsel Foddy.
Thank you worship through you. I just wanna thank you for the clarity and simplicity. It was an easy read, easy to follow and it makes for easy reference.
I wish I could take credit for this, but I can't. Uh this was the work of uh of Melanie Hook, who's here, our HR manager. And working with Kate and a little bit of input from me, but very, very little.
And uh I think we can all appreciate why we needed an HR person all along. Um and uh having the clarity for these um very specific things as things get more and more um difficult. Uh over time, especially as our workforce grows um for the needs of the township. So thank you very much. Excuse me. I will call the question. All those in favor. Ooh, excuse me. Anybody opposed? I don't see. Um I I'm not sure if we should call he Statler or Wardruff, Wardruff. He's not even responding, so I won't. We're not sure. We'll have to do some work on that. Um so the next item of the on the agenda is the fire services report SR dash zero two four dash twenty-three. Fire fighter compensation policy. And it's moved by Counsel Foddy, seconded by Counsel Maybe, that the Committee of the Whole recommends that bylaw, sorry. Recommends that council grant three readings and final passage to bylaw number twenty-three dash zero one four. Being a bylaw to amend by law number twenty-two dash zero one zero to establish and regulate a fire service in the township of Leeds and the Thousand Islands. Motion is on the floor, up for discussion. Count uh Counsel Malaki and then Counselor Gora.
Thank you worship and through you. Um I had some questions that I I brought to staff last week. Um one of which was um with the eighty-three thousand seven hundred dollar uh overage or on account and in budgeting. Um and whether it could be brought down in over two years. Uh but we, I guess from my understanding is we have to go one way or the other. We either do the points or we do the wages. And if we decide to go the wages, it's it's all or nothing. But this actually um seems to tie in with our next report in the fact that we've moved some. Uh things from operating over to capital. Um so basically, I think we seem to have found your money. I'd have to confirm that with the uh. With our treasurer, but uh with our director of financing, but it seems to work out in the wash. We're actually, as a whole, we're ahead of the game, so. Uh I was just looking at the effect on the tax rate, but I don't believe this is gonna have any if you tie it into the next, the next report.
Okay, um sorry, I had Counsel Gora, you had your hand up. And Counselor or uh Counselor Jameson, did you have your hand up? Nope, no, okay, go ahead.
Uh thank you through you, uh your worship. Uh I read the report and I went digging around trying to come to terms with. Uh are we now, have we redefined who a volunteer fireperson is? With respect to the Employment Standards Act, with respect to the Labor uh Relations Act. The only definition that seemed satisfactory was with the W S I P. And I did a lot of reading and I wondered if we could get clarity from H R. As to what is the.
As to what is the status? And I'm getting at that because I see in here a line item that says, um. It was a labor burden cost of sixteen thousand. So I'm asking, is there a difference in how? Payroll deductions. In other words, are these quasi, quasi employees now? Or are, is it a arms-length fire service? And I could not find that answer. It was so ambiguous in everything I read from AMO. Fire Chiefs of Ontario, everything was ambiguous as hell and it really, uh, can we answer that? Thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, worship and through you. Um, it's a wonderful question because that's exactly what we were struggling with. We went to, uh, Cunningham Swan, our solicitors and asked them that exact question. And they came back and they said, well, there's not a simple answer to this. For, under the Employment Standards Act, there's certain things that are carved out for volunteer firefighters. So for instance, hours of work, there's not the same caps and stuff. So there's, there's things that the, the ESA has specifically addressed saying they're not. So by inference, the rest of the ESA will apply. So things about being, uh, entitled to minimum wage, for example, uh, vacation pay. Um, so four percent, six percent, depending on how many years, those things do apply. So, um, are the employees? Yes, they are in some respects. And others, they're, they're carved out from other provisions that every other person that works for the township will be subject to because of the nature of. Of, uh, a firefighter, being a firefighter. So sort of, sort of a long-winded answer to say, yeah, they're, they're, they're covered by certain provisions of the ESA. But other provisions they're excluded from.
Follow up.
So then the, the follow-up to that then, and I do appreciate that because again, that's about as close as I got to an answer.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what, what would worry me then is where, this wasn't brought to us at, uh. Uh, two months ago, when we were finishing up the budget. And it's suddenly confronted and there's enough detail in here that I'm quite, quite confident that this has been discussed for months. And so I'm a little disappointed that we weren't given a heads up at the, um. At the, uh, budget period. And here we are, sort of jumping headfirst into this thing with a twenty-eight percent increase. And I take it this would be retroactive to January one. That's the way we're proposing these numbers. So thoughtfulness would say, could we implement this July one to make it a half year? Um, I, I do appreciate that this is the way fire services are going. I read the numbers for all of Ontario and they are substantial. I won't bore you with them. Um, this is the way things are going. Are we confident in the dollar values that we've put on there? It looks like just sort of a median range. We picked median ranges. We didn't pick the low end. Could have, didn't pick the median. Um. Uh, what else have I got here? Labor burden, I assume to be payroll deductions. Vacation pay, vacation pay, that is all based on the Employment Standards Act. So my final comment is that although this year you're proposing three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. I suspect next year, that may be a good deal here. I don't see in here and I don't really feel confident because I don't understand enough about the way the fire service actually works. I don't know that I feel confident about the numbers being presented. And if I don't have this confidence in these numbers this year, I suspect that next year that could be four hundred and fifty thousand. In other words, do we, are we confident that we have control now that they are quasi-employees? Do we actually have control over the hours worked? Uh, and I, you can tell me Brock, it's impossible because we don't know how many calls are going to be made. That may be true, but then we could dissect that. But as station chiefs and so on, who's responsible for, how many hours did Bob work? You know, who's detailing that and where's the check and balance? On the hours worked? Because I see lots of room for chicanery or whatever. And I want to feel confident knowing that this is the way it has to go. That's a lot of, lot of comment there, so I apologize.
It's okay, there's a lot to unpack. Um, so when we were putting this together, um. This was something that was part of the fire, uh, fire master plan, uh, looking at the compensation thing. We weren't, uh, far enough down the, the, the track. When we started doing the budget talks internally in staffs, remember these things start in August. Um, our opinion from, from Cunningham Swan on whether or not they were employees. Uh, came December fourteenth. So, uh, you know, there wasn't any intent or ill will. Uh, it was just, it took us this long to get to this point. Um, to develop, uh, a model that we thought was fair to the firefighters. Um, so there was no, um, chicanery at all on our part. Um. In the report, I asked, uh, Chief Prior to take what we did last year, calls. And translate that into what if we were on this proposed compensation system. Uh, instead of the honor system. So, uh, him and Fire Prevention Officer Gilroy spent an awful lot of time analyzing the numbers and analyzing the hours. And that three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, um, is what, it's a what if? What if we had exactly the same year this year? Um, it's a busy year. Last week, as councillor Jameson had pointed out to me earlier today. Uh, last week there was fourteen calls for, uh, our, that our fire service responded to. And so, uh, who knows whether those are going to go up or down, as you've identified. We can't predict how many calls we're going to get, uh, or how many firefighters we're going to need for a particular call. Uh, based on what the nature of the call is going to be. Uh, so this was just, uh, for, for example purposes. Of if we had the same year, this is what it would have cost us. Um, so I'm hoping we don't have as busy a year, but, uh, it's looking like it's busy again. And we've got all those mandatory training certifications that we have to do as well. So there's going to be, uh, there's going to be people spending time training to get their certification. So that we can meet the legislative requirements that we have to meet to keep firefighters properly certified to respond to calls. Um, so that's, that's kind of where we're going. I can't say that it's at the end of the year, it's going to be this amount. It's just, we're going to try our best to hit that. Um, if it, i- if there's variance, there's variance. What we're going to try to do is manage this internally. Um, we're not looking for any additional funds from council just yet. If we see that we're going to go in the ditch on our compensation budget, we'll be back and we'll have options for council to consider. Um, but at this point, we're just going to manage it. With respect to the possibility of chicanery, I think, um, you know, there's always games to be played in any system. What this process does is it, it has the firefighters putting in time sheets. On a regular, uh, on a regular, uh, timeframe. I think they're going to get paid monthly. And so, so those are going to station captains. Station captains are reviewing, they're going to go up the chain of command to Chief Prior, who's going to see these and review them. And make sure that there's nothing funny and it's, the, the hours are going to jive with the calls and the training that's been expected. So, uh, you know, we're not going to have a station full of firefighters sitting around just on the meter doing nothing. They're going to be, if they're in the station, they're there for a purpose and they're authorized to be there. Because someone on the chain of command have said, we need these people in our station for whatever purpose that they're doing. On the finance side of things, we have the checks and balances with the rest of our, our salary, our, our, our payroll and that. So finance staff will be reviewing the time sheets as they come in. If we see any anomalies and we're going to watch it like we'd watch all our, our, our time sheets, uh, we'll flag them and investigate further. So I, I think it gives us a little greater scrutiny than, you know. Points are awarded throughout the year and we have no idea how many points are out there. And then all of a sudden, it's, it's magically tabulated at the end of the year, they divide it by the pot. And last year didn't even equate to, uh, uh, minimum wage for our firefighters and it was a great unknown. This, it gives us some, some, some line of sight as to what the true costs are for our fire department. It also incentivizes our firefighters that they know that they're getting a set wage for, for coming to a call or to attend training. And, uh, and I think that'll help us in the long run, um, with, with attracting and retaining, uh, people. So I didn't mean to take up your time.
That's good. Through your worship, uh, to add to that, the unknown part is the actual emergency incidents. We've tracked how many, um, we've tracked how many training sessions we have monthly. We've tracked how many training sessions we have happening out for certifications at the RTC. Um, and all those courses are already combined into that, that amount. Um, so those ones are already pretty well set. Um, the problem I run into, uh, with the certification courses is that all of my folks have jobs outside of Leeds, Thousand Islands. Uh, township for their, for their full-time job. So trying to get folks to be able to sign up to get through the certification by twenty twenty-six is a bit of a challenge. And as I spoke with councillor Jameson earlier today, that number after twenty twenty-six, it drops down. Because we'll have all our people certified to that level. The, the certifications that'll have to happen after twenty twenty-six will be the specialty ones, which we don't have to have everybody certified to all the specialty ones. We also will only be training the people that are coming in or that are moving up into the higher positions after that point. But right now we're playing a game of catch-up where we have forty and fifty people having to be certified into firefighter two to be. To be certified come twenty twenty-six. I can hold those off for two years, but then I've got to try to get sixty or seventy people certified to tw- to firefighter one. Which is going to be that cost is abundantly higher coming up as time goes on. So we're, we're trying to limit what we've got now to the people who are being trained are the ones that have to get trained to that certification. To get the certification for their level, uh, such as the officers to be certified to the officer level and the firefighters to certify to those, those specific levels. So those are the known parts which we've got in there and the, the biggest unknown right now for us is, is obviously calls. And like, uh, the CIO said, fourteen calls last week, we're at forty calls as of today, um, with two today. So, I mean, we, we try to limit how many we get there, uh, what we, what we have. But we, unfortunately with a volunteer group, we don't know how many people are going to show up at the original call. We stand people down. We don't take anybody more than what we really need at those calls. So we are trying to manage it on that. And as the CIO said, we're implementing time sheets that they'll sign those time sheets in every week. They'll go to a file that will be tabulated for the month and that will come to, from the, the station captains to myself to be verified. And then it'll get moved to finance so it can get paid out that way.
Thank you. You have a follow-up councillor Graham?
And I, I do, and thank you for your, uh, um, time on this issue. Uh, as employees, are we dealing with COLA clauses then? Are, are these all subject then? Ninety new employees, is this subject to the same? Office negotiation as may go on with our regular full-time staff. Uh, is that subject to the Employment Standards Act? Um. Can this possibly end up as a union group? Is there any right to strike if that happens? Are these people, pardon me, these people, are these wonderful volunteers of ours? Is it possible that they can do that sort of thing? Is it heard of in Ontario?
Uh, through you, your worship, the, the, um, well, they're on a pay grid. And it's up to council, if we, if we go this way, they'll be on a pay, uh, on a pay grid. Uh, in the report, there's proposed grids for different levels of firefighters. So, uh, y- yes, they'll be part of the review to see if the, the rates of pay. Need to be adjusted over time. Um, if, can they unionize? Uh, I think there are examples of firefighters, uh, fire departments that have unionized. It's a good question on a, on a, um, volunteer department. I'm not really aware of that, but I'll check into it. Um. What else was there? I think I lost track.
Just, uh, let's see, COLA, uh, was one. Uh, so really it's not necessarily that they would be part of the negotiation of our, how do I put it? Our, uh, full-time non-union staff. It's not part of that negotiation.
No, I think it's, I think it's, it's something that we would have to consider separately.
Yeah, okay.
Um, because of the, the different nature of the fire, the fire service and the job that they do is so unique. Compared to what the administrative staff do, for example.
And they are covered by WSIB, so I would assume that being firefighters, that would be a very high rate. Would that be fair to say?
I, I think, but that's, we're paying the WSIB regardless.
Okay.
Uh, one thing I should mention to you as well, uh, they won't be normal, they won't be subject to the CPP and, uh, EI deductions. Because, uh, they're not considered regularly employed by the township. So the, the wording in the federal legislation is they have to be regularly employed. There's case law out there that people that are responding, firefighters that are responding, it's up to them whether or not they respond or not regularly employed. So they won't be subject to those type of deductions. So that's just another example of how they're employees, but they're a little different.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Thank you.
Um, I have councillor Jameson, um, sorry about that.
Um, yeah, I think, you know, councillor Gurrell, I read this thing and it sort of fell into the same holes. And mainly around the technical side, so I was glad to know that we're talking to some, uh. Uh, outside people to get some things sorted out, but you know, um, and, and we'll plan for the worst and hope for the best and. There you go. But on the other hand, um, on the technical side, you know, I, I have to have somebody actually convince me. That, that the CRA wouldn't be looking at this. I know in other places I've worked where people were considered casual. And not subject to all of a sudden, um, all of that was happening. Um, but one of the things about going to this system, which I fully support, is that we're learning about all, all this work. I tried to, to figure out what the point system was all about and it didn't do me any good at all. So this week, as I'm, I'm beginning to come out of my, my, um, blur. Look through my eighteen-dollar, uh, Chopper's Drug Mart glasses. I look at this thing and I thought, oh my gosh. Uh, there are, are technical issues we're going to have to deal with. But at the same time, I just want to underline what was said about training, uh, in the short term. It was, it was less than three years ago that we almost lost certification at station number two. Uh, because we just simply did not have enough people to man, uh, the place. So we've been moving in the right direction and now we've got to deal with this. But I will be much more comfortable when we all have a better understanding of the status of individuals. Because I started to see the, uh, full-time, part-time, all the red flags that councillor Gurrell has mentioned. And I think, I, I hope we can get a really tight picture, not that I'm against any of this, our fire service is wonderful. Like, I just think we need to have a better understanding of what we're facing in the longer term. Thank you.
Are you, are you looking for a legal, um, update in camera in regards to employment stuff? Like, I'm just trying to interpret what you're looking for.
What I'm looking for, I, I'm not sure if it's, it's an in-camera discussion around. What the status is of an individual that's paid by the township for what they do. So in what, um, I talked to the CIO about today and I talked to Mike today, uh, the chief today as well as listening. Uh, to councillor Gurrell, it's, it's not clear to me that we really know what the status is. Of the individuals in, engaged in the fire service. Because you start hearing it flat, uh, you know, quacks like a duck and flies like a duck. Uh, it starts to look like a duck and, and, and if you employ people, you really want to know exactly what their status is. And I think that's where I appreciate that the CIO is reaching out, uh, to get some employment. And our, I'm sure our very capable HR manager will be involved in this. I think we just need to know and, and for the clarity of what we're facing down the road, uh, to councillor Gurrell's point.
So again, I just want to be clear what you're asking for so that we make sure that we. So are you looking for a further detail from the CIO or are you looking for an opinion from a lawyer? Not that you're not a lawyer.
Not, yeah, he's a lawyer. I am not a lawyer. I just think we need to know what the status is of an individual in that role with respect to. To save time, all of the above.
Okay.
And if that doesn't make sense, I'll write something down, but. And if that doesn't make sense, I'll write something down, but that's what I'm looking for.
Okay, so I'm going to let the CIO speak at this point and perhaps he can provide clarity now.
So status-wise, they are employees of the township. They have been employees, we haven't been calling them that, but nevertheless, the fact of the matter is they're employees. They're special employees in that they work in fire services and there are certain exemptions to, um, certain requirements under the Employment Standards Act, like limiting their hours of work and that sort of thing. But they still are employees. When we pay them, we don't have to take off EI and CPP because there's a carve-out, because they're not regularly employed employees in that they answer calls and they, they, they come when they want to essentially. But overall, their, the term of their employment, they control how many hours they work. It's up to them whether they answer or not. They still will be subject to the deduction for income tax. Uh, so the CRA will be happy on that because they'll be getting their cut on this. Um, they also, if they want to, they'll be able to join Omers. And so, and enjoy the pension, but on, on, uh, whatever their average salary is going to be, it's not really substantial. And, and people may, I think we're expecting the majority of firefighters won't take it up. However, that's an option that's available to them. So, so we've been calling them paid-on-call firefighters. We've been avoiding using the word employee, but in law, they are.
Does that, does that clarify for you councillor Jamison?
Well, uh, I can tell you, I'm glad I'm not managing it. The system, uh, but doesn't take away, you know, great support I have for the fire service and all the good things that we've seen happen in the last two or three years. But these, I, 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 to take councillor Gurrell's point, you know, next thing you know, you, you get bitten and, and you don't want to be surprised. So I appreciate that the confidence we have in the staff will watch this to the extent that, that, you know, I mean, CRA, you never know, you just never know. So I, I, I'm, I'm not looking for anything special, um, not, don't spend any money, any more money and you have to. But I appreciate that staff knows that they have to monitor this and I'm quite sure they will.
Okay. So I have councillor maybe and then councillor Fodey.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, through to the chief. Um, with the current system opposed to the new system, would that affect the call-out of the, uh, personnel that need to respond or, or how they, how often they respond perhaps?
Uh, through your worship, no. Um, currently, um, the way the point systems work, it, it actually kind of works into a two-hour call-out for the call, um, for a minimum. Um, but what we're looking or what we're proposing is a one-hour call-out, what they get called out and they get, they get paid for all of their training, they get paid for all of that. It's not going to change the amount of people we need on scenes. Um, the, the biggest challenging part, uh, for me as fire chief is knowing exactly who we're going to have. We have an app called Who's Responding that we've got a pretty good coverage on that we can tell how many people are coming. Um, there are certain places that do put caps on them, but we've, we've put a, we've put a cap on how many people respond to a medical call from the station. We've, we cap it that way, but we don't have any, I don't see any real changes on that currently.
Okay, councillor Fodey, go ahead.
Thank you worship through you. A number of my questions have already been answered. When I was going through this on the weekend, I couldn't help but to relate to the tragic situation the Buffalo Fire Department experienced last week. So as an employee, if one of our firefighters gets hurt or seriously hurt or worse than, who pays?
Uh, through your worship, uh, WSIB, we've always been covered as volunteer, as paid-on-call or whatever the flavor is. And, and we're not, we're not any different than anywhere else. We've, every fire department that I've been a part of or spoke with, they're all kind of in the same boat. Um, WSIB is, is who covers us on that. We also have, uh, the VIFS, uh, system here as well as it, it's an actual, another insurance that we pay to cover, um, our volunteer firefighters and have for, for a number of years. And it covers accidental death, that it covers, uh, injury and, and such to lost time. So.
Okay. And a follow-up, thank you. I reached out to the fire chief last Friday afternoon on a couple of questions. Um, the CIO just touched on that. I was curious whether our firefighters were eligible. I assume they were based on the provincial, uh, announcement that they're part-time people are eligible for Omers. And I'll let you answer that, the, the CIO already did, but I, my question was, are they eligible? What would be the likelihood of them signing up and so on? But that's already been touched on, maybe.
Uh, through your worship, yes, with the Omers, um, I've been speaking with some of our staff, just, we've, we've got a various age range from twenty years old to seventy plus years old. So obviously the older group are probably not going to be looking at that, but perhaps some of the younger staff are, that are looking to stay here for years are, are going to be looking at that because it's another little bit in their pension block. So.
The contribution amount is six percent of income, is that, I believe? Does anybody have an answer to that? Yes. So, so eligible, um, members of the service would be able to put six percent of their income. So depending on how robust their paychecks are, it may or may not be worth it in the grand scheme of things. Go ahead.
Thank you. My final question is, what number are we striving for, for total in the fire services? We're at, where are we standing now? Around eighty-two or three?
Uh, through your worship, we're at eighty-two right now, or eighty-one, sorry, right now. Uh, the firemaster plan was pushing for a hundred. Um, we just did, uh, two years ago, we had a thirty-five per, thirty-five people signed up for, uh, joining up. We brought twenty-one on. Um, this year we had eleven sign up and we've got eight. So that's eight between four stations. So those numbers are really dwindling, so we may have to look at another, uh, recruitment again. Uh, we, we, people come in and come, come and go very regularly. The average time now is three to five years. No, nobody really ever stays like me thirty-five years. Um, they just kind of come and go as their life changes, um, and or they get tired of doing it or tired of getting called out in dinnertime and middle their sleep or whatever. Um, my goal is eventually to get to a hundred, but we were, we were as close two years ago to ninety, um, and we've dropped that many just over the last year and even have them bring, bring some on. So.
Well, I think the real, uh, positive in this is that our, our firefighters aren't looking at a shameful, uh, hourly rate. Uh, it wasn't intended, I know, but when you look at less than minimum wage to be interrupting your life whenever and frequently, then, uh, there's some satisfaction in knowing that we've, we've squashed that. Thank you.
Yeah, and through your worship, um, I know there was a question about unions. Um, the volunteers under point system, they could have, they could have made, uh, got into a union years ago. There's a number of them out there. Um, there has been no talk on the floor at all about anything like that. I think they'd be quite happy to have a, a rate that they know what they're going to get paid. Um, that's always, two years ago it was around twenty-six dollars an hour. Uh, one year ago it was around twenty-one and then it dropped to thirteen sixty-eight. So, you know, it's, it's all over the board on, on what they, what it was. So having, having been paid for their calls, call-outs and being paid properly for their extra training on their certification now that that's mandatory, it was never paid for. So you could spend, uh, for fire one, you spend five weekends at the training center and, and under the old, old regular, uh, way we were paying, we didn't pay any of that time. So they were giving up five weekends out of their life to go and just for one course. So they weren't getting paid up until last year, they were getting two points, which turned out to twenty-six dollars, well, thirty dollars an hour or thirty dollars a day. So really having this and having them properly paid, that's going to help with our retention. Um, I didn't go bottom of the barrel on, on start rate. I didn't go at the top because I know where we sit. But I didn't want to go to six, fifteen, fifty an hour for minimum wage. You can do that at McDonald's. Um, and probably not have to worry about some of the things we have to worry about. So we started a little higher at sixteen as a little bit of an incentive to get people out. Um, and then that regular pay will help hopefully keep them here.
Okay. Further comments or questions? Go ahead councillor.
Uh, thank you, uh, through you, your worship. And in some respects, I apologize for beating this to death. But we are talking eighty to ninety to a hundred employ, uh, status employees and it, that is a considerable force, pardon the pun, when it comes to wage negotiation. And just even as a starting point here, I noticed that we don't want to do the minimum three-hour thing, which some do. So the next thing I hear down the road is a group of people saying, uh, uh, we'd like to have the three-hour minimum. Who then therefore does this negotiation with a union, uh, situation? We know who's doing the bargaining, or the bargaining, excuse me. Um, in this situation, who's sitting down with whom? You know, it, you're not sitting down with an individual firefighter, I don't imagine. So what do they do? Do they, does, does a, um, association get formed and then, and then that becomes? Or do we just dictate what they're going to get? Hey, you're going to get, uh, no, you're not going to get that, uh, no, you're not going to get a one percent increase. Just there are so many variables going on here because of this quasi, quasi-employee deal that, again, I stated, I know this is going to be the road forward for all of Ontario, but was it a hundred and nineteen thousand volunteer firefighters in Ontario? Um, and AMO and the fire chief said the pressures put on municipalities are tremendous. I do not see any breaks. I don't see any, um, checks and balances here. It's just, here's a start point. And what I just see is inflation, inflation, inflation. I mean inflationary numbers, not, uh, not CPI inflation. That, that's what I, my fear is. And I don't know how we control that. And it's not being talked about really. So thank you.
Um, through you, your worship, it's, it's going to come whether we are part of an honors, uh, the honorariums and the points or not. It'll hit us one way or the other. Whether we call them employees or not call them employees, they're still employees. If they're going to be disgruntled, they're going to be disgruntled, whether they're going to go through a union or not through a union. Um, my impression is the channels of communication, the informal channels of communication through the fire department work very effectively. And so if there is grumbling about salaries and all that sort of stuff, we'll hear about it. And then it'll be up to, through the chain of command, whatever the, the will of council is, we'll push it down through the chain of command and it'll be communicated to the firefighters on the, on the station floor. Um, yeah, anything can happen councillor. Uh, it's, it's, I, I, you know, yes, we're all going to be facing inflation. We have been. It's, there's unknowns on, on all fronts here. We can't, uh, hedge, uh, everything. But I understand your point's well taken. They, they will have to monitor it, will have to, will have to keep control. We'll have to have the, the checks and balances in place when we're paying people. Anytime we're handling money, we have to be really careful. We have a, as you've pointed out time and time again, we have a fiduciary duty to manage the taxpayers' fund in the most effective way and make sure that there's proper controls on how it's spent. So, so managing another salary group is part of what we're going to be doing. We do it, we, it's, what we have right now with the honor, the, uh, point system, it's, it's, it's hard to follow and it's hard to know where we are on, on a monthly basis. It's just kind of, I'll wait and see what happens at the end of the year. This way we'll be getting timely information monthly. Uh, the station captains will be seeing what's going on weekly and that'll be filtering up to the chief and then through to me. Uh, so we'll have a better finger on what's going on. We'll have a better line of sight of what the hours are incurred and what the costs are going to be. We'll also be able to understand exactly how expensive it is to, to go to a call. We could pick a call and analyze who went and how much it cost us. It, it's, it's going to drive a lot of data for us.
So, um, I've got councillor Jamison and then I've got councillor Fodey and then I'm going to wrap this up.
Excuse me, uh, the only thing I wanted to say is I, well, excuse me. Support, excuse me, I'll come back. Um, I certainly appreciate what councillor Gurrell's saying and ECA's response. But I think it's very important as the governors, if you will, that we don't negotiate against ourselves. Um, let's not scream before we're hit. Um, I think is the message from the CIO. Um, yes, it can all happen, but let's not anticipate our negotiating positions in advance of actually having to do it.
Councillor Fodey, go ahead.
Thank you worship through you. With the number of calls with addictions, uh, increasing that the rate that they are, it's always been understood that the counties would take care of the health, so to speak, department. With the number of addiction calls that firefighters get now, is there any conversation with, with yourself as a chief and, and the county, or is the county looking at it that each jurisdiction will just deal with their own increase?
Uh, through your worship, uh, councillor Jamison and I both sit on the, on the group that's formed through Ganakwe and Rito Lakes on, on addictions and, um, youth and all of, all of those pieces put together. And there's no real, uh, the county, the county sits in on it with the health unit and the mayors and the councillors of that area. Um, there's no money coming back per se for that. Um, but I mean, that, that's something that's certainly happening quite regularly now. Um, most of our, shouldn't say most, but a number of our medical calls that are, uh, VSA-related or vital signs absence have, used to be just a cardiac arrest call. Now a lot of these calls are coming in and they're turning into overdose calls. So it's something that we're seeing much more regularly. So with that, that comes more training. It comes all of those pieces and parts when we, when we break it all down and that as well.
Okay, so we've gone around the table a couple of times. So I'm going to call the question on this. And if there's further discussion to be had, I think it's really important that the councillors, uh, come forward this week and have further discussion and dialogue with both the chief and the CIO and other relevant, uh, staff members uh, before we move forward at council, regardless of what the outcome of this is. So I will call the question for the motion that's on the floor, which is to grant three readings and final passage to bylaw number twenty-three dash zero one four, being a bylaw to amend bylaw twenty-two dash zero one zero. All those in favor of the motion at hand? All those opposed? And it's carried. Okay, so we are at seven fifty, so we're a bit past our seven-thirty mark, but a very important discussion. So I will call a recess for ten minutes. We'll come back at eight o'clock and finish up the rest of the agenda. Thank you.